Mr. Lawrence is second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Five zero with Ms. Newman and Mr. Guines.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5A, Exhibit A only. Resolution for our grant application for project number 1056, sediment removal phase two. We're adding item 5J, resolution approving final pay application number two to J.E. Boyes for Sherman Canyon repairs.
Move the agenda as amended.
I second it. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? Five zero. We will now move to our presentation agenda. Mr. Gillich.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a sad day for Biloxi, for me, but a great day for Pinky and her family. Pinky AP Lewis. AP stands for Accounts Payable. Okay. Look at that way, right there. But eighty-eight, I think that's a long time. We started together, didn't we, around here? All right. So it's a great pleasure. Like I said, it's a, you know, marked this occasion by a great proclamation comes from all of us and appreciative of your dedication and your hard work. Whereas after more than three decades of devoting her time and her energy to the city of Biloxi and our citizens, Pinky Lewis has decided to begin the next phase of her life, retirement. Whereas Pinky, who began her career as the finance division of the City of Biloxi Administration Department on May 3rd, 1988, is a secretary one, has served the city as an executive secretary one and into accountant one, and since April of 1993 as accountant two, which is the main player for me anyhow. Whereas throughout her career, Pinky has successfully made sure that bills were presented for payment by city leaders, volunteered at city festivals, and provided support at entry level police tests, city auctions, and city-sponsored school programs, and blood drives. She's also a community leader, serving as a member and the past queen of the Second Ladies' Monograph Club. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, in her honor, thirty-three years of outstanding service, and on the occasion of her last day of employment with the City of Biloxi, do hereby proclaim the twenty-second day of June 2021 as Pinky Lewis Day.
I don't know what to say. Well, you're right, I'm never at a loss for words. I just want to say that it's been a very rewarding experience working here for the City of Biloxi. When I walked in here on May 3rd, 1988, I had no idea I'd be here this long, but I enjoyed my work. I've seen a lot of leaders come and go, and it's been a very rewarding experience, and I want to thank the city very much.
And I believe that concludes my report.
All right. Do we have any departmental reports? If not, we'll start with our council reports with Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, we had a busy week again. The police chief Miller could probably explain to y'all what happened with the 250 police chiefs down in Biloxi, but on a nice crowd, chief, if you'd like to put a little more to it, because we got a lot of stuff with you and a lot of stuff with the fire departments, great things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And the next one we have is Chief Bone is going to be head of the 400th department throughout the state. He's going to be elected president of that organization. So that's another good thing. And they in town, are they in town now?
Yeah. Thursday, I think there's something at the, see, the Fire Museum on Western Fire Hall.
I mean, that's another good thing for Biloxi. All the people keep coming to Biloxi, it's a good thing. The next thing we have is the debris pickup has got worse than ever before. The trash can that we worked on, it took them six weeks to pick up the trash can last night. It started May 14th, and she did make several calls, and nobody's seen her respond to her. So I don't know why it took actually over six weeks to pick up two trash cans. I mean, there's no need for that. So either we need to find these people, or to pull a contract, or just quit paying them. And the same way with the debris. Debris everywhere on Port of Forest, all through Ward 1, probably the rest of the wards. They're just not getting it. They're just not picking it up. And I don't want to hear there's chiefs that don't have two trucks or whatever it is. They're not picking this stuff up. And I know you're going to probably hear from the rest of the council because it's been bad for the last four or five weeks. It's just like they're missing it constantly. They pick up one or two piles, leave the rest of them. So they're not picking up the stuff. So I don't know, we just need to pull the contract, quit paying them? They don't seem to affect them unless you pull their pocket money. And right now, they're not doing the job. So the service we paying for, we're not getting. And it's obvious. All you can do is ride around the city.
Well, you know, they need to do the job. We'll hold them to that task. We've had a new couple of interactions, and I think Mike gives a little report on some of the things that we have to recall, some things that had been picked up, whether it's trash or debris or waste management, two different contracts.
Now, we know that.
And anyway, if you want to give a little bit of a report.
As we've discussed, councilman, the contract that they operate under has a requirement for penalties when they don't pick somebody up. Whether that goes for both team, the old team waste or waste management for trash cans, and the same is case for Pelican Waste for debris. All we have to do is make a call to them if something's not picked up, and then if the day goes by and it's not still picked up by the end of the day, they assess the hundred dollar fine. I mean, it doesn't do us any good to complain about it. I mean, we just need to call. We need to call. Every can has got a phone number on it. Our website has got a phone number to call. And, you know, the case of the lady that you and I discussed, I went out there after you called me, as I said, I would have preferred you call Waste Management, not me. But I went out there and looked, and the two cans were there. I called the utility authority, they called Waste Management, they came and picked it up. And they claimed, when I checked with them, that that lady had never called. They had no record of any calls from that address. So I don't know who's telling the story, the straight story here, but the process is in place for us to penalize the contractor when they don't pick up trash. We just have to use the system. We have to make the call, and then if it's not picked up, we call again and tell them, okay, day's over, it hadn't been picked up. And they have to report that as a hundred dollar fine. And every month when the mayor goes to the utility authority, they stand up and tell you how many fines that they were assessed. So, I mean, there's a process to manage this. We just got to use it. Now, I'm not saying it's right that they missed a can. That particular can was at the tee where Quaranty Tees into Division Street, and it was open. There was no reason why they couldn't get in there to pick that can up, and they did later. But they just missed it, so.
The lady called three different times, May 14th, May 17th, and May 21st. So she called, she called them on the cell phone. So they said they didn't get an address, she gave them that 1060 Division Street to pick it up. So I don't know who telling you that. And these people said, she's not calling anymore because that's the rudest people she's ever talked to in her life. She said, I'm not calling that number on a can again.
Well, something's wrong because they're saying they never had a call from that address. She's saying she called them four times.
She told me she had it dated, and she had the date she gave them to them, and she called.
Well, again, we have a system. If we'll use it, we can, this contractor will be penalized for missing. They've got a great system where they can, I mean, they can look, call the truck that was supposed to be there, they can see the video, and the video will show whether the can was picked up or not.
They had to know that. They got chips in them can.
And there's chips in the can, so they...
And they know that in the six weeks to pick up trash can, that they passed by constantly. Like you said, it was open. Everybody brother using the road, and they passed through that. I mean, just see people frustrated, like they feel like they're paying for service, and they're not getting it.
And the biggest problem we're having with the pick of yard debris, that is with Pelican Waste, the biggest problem we're having is people not putting it in front of their house, but putting it at a vacant lot or somewhere where they can't, it can't be gotten to and picked up. They can't reach in where they put it. That doesn't mean that they aren't, they're perfect, but many of the cases that we find have occurred because somebody either mixed garbage and trash together, or they put it in front of a vacant lot, and they won't pick up from a vacant lot.
Yeah, but they, most of this property in this area sits in front of somebody's property.
Yeah, what we've done is, if we get a call that it hadn't been picked up, and we find out it's at a vacant lot, we dispatch one of our city trucks, one of our three city trucks out to, we've done that, did that council on Guines just a week ago on Delaney Street, where they had put a bunch of mattresses in front of a vacant lot. We called Pelican Waste, they said we don't pick up from there, we dispatched our truck.
Well, I'll tell you, you probably write on some of the empty lots, but eighty percent of it sits in front of somebody's yard. So that's a really weak excuse for them. They can't claim that all the time, because it's not the case. They're sitting in front of addresses, and they're not picking it up.
I attended the utility authority this week because the mayor was out of town, and I voiced our complaint, that I said we're having issues, we're having issues with Pelican Waste picking up, and the county said they were also having issues. So that's been passed on. Now, I wasn't able to get many specific locations.
Well, you know, we pay for the service, and it seems like those council, we all have to call them in, or the president's got to call them in. They are paid to pick this stuff up once a week. And I know that sometimes they miss them, but there's too many people and too many trash piles, debris piles, that are not picked up. And these people are pretty upset. They clean their yard to do what they're supposed to, and yet we're not doing what we're supposed to do. Or they're not.
Fourteen thousand residences in the city require pickup each week.
Yeah, fourteen thousand.
So I don't know how many is bad. I guess one's bad.
Well, I guess you can find out from the rest of the council because they're all having the same problem, and not just in one ward, it's in a lot of wards.
We'll get you a report this week and follow-up email exactly what we've discovered with regard to Pelican Waste as well as Waste Management. We're going to hold them accountable and make sure they're fined when they don't perform. It's the only thing we can say right now.
All right. You know, I talked about Wyden Oak Street since it's all messed up. Have you looked into that? Wyden Oak Street, since everything is messed up, and we could do something about it right now?
We're a bit of looking at that with Lane and some of the things with regarding that, but I haven't, you know, nailed that as far as what are the possibilities with the footprint we have right now. But we'll look into that.
Yeah, and you said you were going to talk to Dale Associates about looking at that and the kitchens on to the library outside, like we did at the Magnolia Hotel?
Meeting scheduled with those, you know, with them, but, you know, I haven't done it yet since we've been out of town last week.
All right, thank you.
All right, just on that garbage pickup note, have we ever, just one question, have we ever implemented any fine on them? Have we ever done any of that before?
We have called in, and they have been fined in the past, over the last three, what do we, we've got three years, three years on this contract right now? There have been fines assessed because of no pickups in Biloxi.
Okay, so we did do...
But it hasn't been a lot of money. I mean, it hasn't been a lot of money on a lot of occasions because they're just not reported. Now, you call and say your trash isn't picked up, first of all, they're going to verify that the trash was out there on time, and that it was where you say it is, and they'll send a truck to pick it up. But if the 24 hours pass, and they don't get there, then they get fined.
Okay, okay, that's all I have.
So the important thing is to make those calls to the number that's on our city website.
Right, because what I try to do is I try to, I'll go out there, take a picture of it with the address, and then send it in, so we have proof that we had it. Okay, that's all I have. The other thing is, I didn't catch up with Walt last week, so let's see if we can make it happen this week. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Very short report. Want to start with, I know Billy Ray is not here, given all the rain we've had, and funny statistic, April, I was looking at the numbers, and April was the wettest April in the history of Biloxi, but it was only the fourth wettest April in the history of Gulfport.
Rain's rain, man. It always go where you want it to.
Right. Given all the rain, do we know how far we are, how far back behind we are for Public Works, for easements, stuff like that? I mean, we've got to be backed up, right?
Yeah. Councilman, I got to tell you, Billy Ray is meeting himself, coming and going right now, using the repair replace contract to do drainage repairs. We've got drainage repairs going on all over the city. Some of them costing, the one on Hampton Lane was near a hundred thousand dollars. And so we're chasing those. Now, what we haven't gotten to, for example, is the paving at the bluffs. I had an inspector out there today because I was pretty sure we were going to be talking about that again, and he delineated a number of areas where we needed to make repairs. I told him to go out, go back out and mark them with some sort of paint or something so we can, can we go back out and then calculate the volume of concrete pavement that needs to be replaced, gutted and replaced? And then we can then go to, once we have some numbers, we go to the county and ask them to help us.
Okay, great.
So that first part just really is, we need to mark the trouble spots. And it's a concrete, it's got concrete roads, so we'll, the only way to fix them is to cut out big sections and put in new subgrade and then...
Right.
So you should see some markings showing up out there on the bluffs now.
Okay, great. I look forward to seeing those markings, finally getting something accomplished. Still, I wanted to get with you, we haven't done that drive-by, I know, with DC trip, which went great, met with all of our congressional delegation. Well, there was one no-show, but...
Help the staff.
Yeah, it seemed like, it seemed like everybody was on board with what we need to do in Biloxi, so hopefully we'll, we'll see some fruit from that venture. And if we can lock down a time, just a couple hours to ride through the ward, I would appreciate that. I have nothing further.
Councilman, while you have the floor, if you'd let me say something about the Pops Ferry Bridge real quick, just to remind you, since your ward is very much involved with the Pops Ferry Bridge, the company Hoover and Associates on Thursday between nine and three will shut the bridge down, will have detour signs out, and they're going to do some mechanical repairs to the bridge so that it will be more, you know, it'll, the problem we've got is, the meantime between failures is getting shorter and shorter, and occasional failures we can live with, but it's just becoming too and too often. So this is the same company that's doing the work on the bridge in Ocean Springs right now. They're going to come over, send a crew over for that one six-hour period and make some mechanical repairs underneath that we think will make a difference. We hate to shut the bridge down, but...
You want to give us that time again?
Yeah, from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon, it'll be open. It'd be closed.
What day?
And that's been announced on our B-mail and so forth, and we've got the WWLAX, LOX has got the news, and so we'll, so this is, this is coming Thursday, day after tomorrow.
Two days from today.
If Cedar Lake isn't flooded, they can use that as an alternate route.
That's right, yeah.
Tisdale? Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I wanted to echo Mr. Lawrence's congratulations of Chief Bone and his selection as president of the Southeastern Association of Fire Chiefs. I understand he's the first Mississippian to serve in that position. And secondly, just a reminder, although I know Captain Dykes and Chief Miller don't have to be reminded, that scraping the coast is this weekend, and Ground Zero is always by the Coliseum. Fortunately, it's in Ward Five, and I want to know that those neighborhoods and apartment complexes that are heavily impacted with that, I delivered the passes to them that merely serve to recognize them as residents in the area, because we have a lot of people who go through these neighborhoods looking for outlets and shortcuts, and it creates some issues sometimes. But the police department has always done a very good job with this event and other events. I have every reason to believe that they're going to do a terrific job this time, and just urge folks who are traveling in that area of Highway 90, particularly on Saturday, Friday night and Saturday, it's going to be heavy traffic, the same traffic plan that's been used in the past. The only difference is for some of these apartment complexes and neighborhoods, there's limited access in and out of Highway 90 for those residents, but that's why they have the passes. So I want to thank Captain Dykes for spending some time with me and working on this. So, and Chief, thank you for your staff. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few things I just want to get on the table today. I spent some time with a resident out by Live Oak by the Bay. This is concerning the development next to her neighborhood. They're putting in a retention pond. She's comfortable, and she thanks the city for coming out and making sure that they got the proper fill permits, and the topography is going to be correct, that it doesn't cause additional drainage. Also, I spent a little bit of time this afternoon around lunchtime with the homeowners association out at Reunion Place, and spoke to their leadership. They wanted me to mention to the mayor specifically, and Mike, that they appreciate the, putting the fence back up around the lift station, and particularly, there's somebody right across the street trying to sell their home, and they said it looks really a lot better than what it did before. Shout out to Billy Ray. We've talked about how taxed he is and everything, but he came out to Pelican Bayou, there was some erosion happening, and he brought some rocks out and kind of corrected a situation with some drainage and some sidewalk erosion. Mr. Enfield wanted to make sure that everybody knew that he appreciated that. The Kimbrough Drainage, we did send the Public Works team out there, and they fixed an area, but it was not the area that Ms. Parker was talking about, and they're still having to wet back some of their corner of their house with all this rain and flooding, and they said it has to be stopped up because it hasn't happened like this in the past. So if we can just make sure that we are trying to take care of that. Two more things. Mr. Palmer on Brody is willing to give a drainage easement. If someone would come out and speak to him and look at the area, that it may work to put that easement in place and we can maintain it, he said he's willing to talk about that. And last but not least, I just want to ask the administration to not forget about getting Seymour Engineering here to give us a dredging update. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of things. Like everyone else, I know that we're having, I don't really have any issues with the trash pickup, it's more the debris pickup. And I have an appointment with Alan to talk to him after the meeting today about that. Usually on the trash, just making a call gets it picked up on the trash cans, but the debris is where, and I know my area is a little different than the other wards just because there's so much more wooded areas and stuff, but it's really becoming an issue out there. Old Highway 67, I don't know the address, but just to the east of the new fire station, when I first was elected, we passed a conditional use for a commercial use to put up a building to store their equipment in. And that has never happened. They've used it basically as a lay-down yard to store their, to store their trucks and all kinds of equipment, and that yard is also full of red clay. In the middle of that yard, they have a drain with a pipe going into the ground that runs out to the ditch, and when it rains, it, and they have a rag over the, over the pipe that runs into that ditch, and when it rains, I went out yesterday, from that all the way to Cedar Lake Road was nothing but red. And I know we've been out there before, but if this, if it's not cleaned up, I'm going to ask for us to withdraw their conditional use on that property because they're not doing what they originally applied for, and they're not cleaning it up when they're asked either. And I'm getting a lot of complaints in the area from residents, people that live across the street in nice homes, they don't want to look across the street and see this junk. It's just not acceptable, and...
Call the name of the property owner, was it Williams?
I do, no, it's not, I don't think... Yeah. Yeah, and they just, they have like, I'm, it's like an eight-inch pipe running out, and they have a black, some type of cloth over it to, I guess, try to catch the silt, but yesterday I went out there, and it literally, it was red, like a red river from that property all the way to Cedar Lake Road. And so the amount of sediment they're dumping into the ditch is just unacceptable. And not only that, the properties, the grass is four or five foot tall, it's just, they need to clean it up and put a building up, or either we need to pull that conditional use permit that we gave them. Yeah, right in between Jake and Jim Hustley, I believe it is. Yeah, right, yeah, right there. Okay, I appreciate it. Public Works, Mike Hostly is busting his tail with all this rain. We have roads washing out, culverts collapsing. We do have a couple that I want to talk to you about after the meeting that are causing some major issues that I think we're going to have to maybe go in and cut the road and put some kind of drainage under or something. It's going to be one of those bigger projects instead of just fixing a road that continues to do it over and over. And I don't know that patching, it's just going to continue to do it. And one of them, yesterday, the road was washed out four foot. Luckily, nobody, you know, drove off into that big washout. We caught it before they did, but there's a couple of those. And then on Woolmarket Road yesterday, I guess a vehicle hydroplaned right where we, in the area where we just did the new drainage project, and went off into the, that big ditch and sunk. And I rode down through there in the middle of that heavy, heavy rain, and the road was underwater a foot at least. And I don't, we have an ongoing problem there. And so I think we need to get barricades and just leave them to warn people, because people's coming down that road forty-five, fifty miles an hour, and they're hitting that water before they can, you know, see it good enough to slow down. And so if we can, you know, have Public Works or whoever handles that, just to warn people to slow down whenever it's a heavy rain, when they're getting in that area, because someone's going to, you know, yesterday, that guy, I mean, it was on the news, you should have, the truck was basically completely underwater. And so somebody could have gotten injured bad. So if we could do something there, and then I'm going to send you an email as well, I have several requests for some streetlights that have went out, and that's all I have.
I'd like to add to Popo one thing. I know y'all made a great trip to Washington, DC. Could you give us an update maybe next week on, on the next meeting, what y'all accomplished? Did we do good or bad or what?
Well, I think it was a very successful, you know, it's, we were, the timeliness of the trip, since it was very, you know, wasn't as much hecticness and so forth, we had a number of productive meetings with staff folks and actually both of our senators, and to get on...
to warn people to slow down whenever it's a heavy rain, when they're getting in that area, because someone's going to, you know, yesterday, that guy, I mean, it was on the news, you should have, the truck was basically completely underwater. And so somebody could have gotten injured bad. So if we could do something there. And then I'm going to send you an email as well. I have several requests for some streetlights that have went out. And that's all I have.
I'd like to add to Popo one thing. I know y'all made a great trip to Washington, DC. Could you give us an update maybe next week on, on the next meeting? What y'all accomplished? Did we do good or bad or what?
Well, I think it was a very successful, you know, it's, we were, the timeliness of the trip, since it was very, you know, wasn't as much hecticness and so forth, we had a number of productive meetings with staff folks and actually both of our senators. And to get on this list in a timely manner, they know what we need, will know what we're asking for. And we covered a lot of ground and some terms that we learned. You know, I don't know when, whether we won or lost or whatever, but they know we're there. We came in force, and I think it was a very productive trip. But I will update you on what we feel, especially, you know, after a few days we're back home and some of the interactions that we have with the staff. We'll, they've asked for some executive summaries so we can, you know, especially for the new bridge, you know, how to, you know, present it, and they offered to review some of our applications before we actually move it forward and put DOT. It was a very productive trip. It was, you know, something that, the timeliness was good.
Appreciate that.
All right. We'll now move to our public agenda. Citizen comments. We'll have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Whenever you come forward, we ask that you please sign in at the table, as well as state your name for the record. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone on my left side, your right side, that would like to speak? Please come forward and sign in and state your name, please.
Sorry, your time is up.
Is there anyone else on my left side and your right side that would like to speak? Come forward and state your name and sign in.
All right, my name's John Higgins. I just put my house up for sale because it's about to collapse in. I met with the city engineer staff in front of my home because of the change in street elevation, which is not AD/ADA compliant. Caused by this stormwater project, this has caused me to fall repeatedly. I was told I should see Craig Ross at Public Works and get on the house repair list, just because of all the damages to my home. Well, I tell you what, I know people that's been on that list for seven or eight years. They ain't had nothing. Courtney Martin from Associated Justice came to my home. The city of Bloxie is paying this company $75 an hour to meet with homeowners, but he admitted that he sends the list of homeowners with damage over to the Oscar Renda, who did nothing, did the damages in the first place. How can Oscar Renda get to decide what to do with the list? There's nothing in place to hold Oscar Renda accountable. They choose when or if repairs are made to, for the homeowner. They private, they get to who gets help. The results, no one is holding Oscar Renda feet to the fire. I asked Courtney Martin what are the outcomes of this list. He admitted he gets no status reports, no updates, when there are no timelines, there are no deadlines, and homeowners never get a follow-up report. This is all Oscar Renda, it's all up to Oscar Renda if anything happens. So this appears just to be a game. A storm attacked it. The city of Bloxie is using it to deflect all of these poor people. I also read the contract. The city of Bloxie, they gave Associate Justice International an authority to settle cases up to 5,000 without further approval. City council members, why don't you all do the right thing, instruct Associate Justice to settle some of these cases? These people on the list, at least get under the 5,000. Because of fundamental and misleading to the residents telling them to adjust, the adjuster will come out and take pictures, do a report, get their phones fixed, when the list is given right back to Oscar Renda? I mean, my neighbors had their power knocked out, the roof damaged to Oscar Renda Trico. The stormwater project on Quares Avenue. Oscar Renda should have fixed the damage by their neighbors when they put on a list, they're waiting five years later. They knocked the power off the house, tore up the roof, and they ain't got to fix it? They'll do y'all's job. It appears a deep investigation needs to be conducted, perhaps by HUD, the governor's office, the state law enforcement, or the media. But no fear, stay tuned, because I will continue to come here and reveal many other facts, because more are coming, and I got about that much right now. And there's been so much fraud that next time I come in here, I'm opening up a can of worms that there's some people in here all directly know about it. Don't worry about it. If the feds talk to you, they already know the answers. Thank you all for not doing your job.
Is there anyone else on my left side and your right side that would like to speak? Anyone on my right side, your left side? Anyone in the back that would like to speak? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed. We will now move to our policy agenda, Resolution A.
Resolution granting conditional use for an auto repair servicing use for the property located at 1749 Pash Road.
Do I have a motion? All right.
Second.
All right, we have a first by Ms. Newman, second by Mr. Glavin. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. We will now move to the consent agenda. Was that a second? Okay, I'm sorry. First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
I know we adjusted a lot of the A, the first one. I know y'all added a lot of different things to that. Kenny and Robert did that last week. Did y'all act with Keegan's bayou in there too?
Yeah, it's in the mix as far as the Gomasa project.
So everything that they actually, you have that listed also? We adjusted?
Sediment removal. Sediment removal is one of the five projects that we submitted for tidlins. I say five, there are four, one of them you tabled that we're going to talk about again today. They were the five tidlins projects. Some projects are more suited to tidlins grant, and some are more suited to Gomasa. We haven't gotten the green light to submit our Gomasa packages yet, but they are ready to go. And Keegan's bayou is one of the Gomasa packages. If you'd like, if you'd like, I've got a list of the five tidlins projects that you, that we've talked about, and the six Gomasa projects. And I'll give you a copy of that, so you can see. We haven't brought the Gomasa projects to council yet because we haven't got the green light to turn them into DMR yet.
Definitely something we need in hand. That'd be good to have that. Thank you. No, no. B. Exactly what is it? End user license. What is it?
This is D as in Delta?
B.
B like in Bravo. I got you. Bravo.
Chief. Crash data. Just crash data. Automotive Solutions with crash data, for crash data.
Yeah, this is to allow us to extract, you know, all vehicles now have basically a black box in the vehicle. This allows us to remove that data and look at it after there's been an accident.
So like the airplanes, huh? Didn't realize that, it's like the airplane.
Yep, same, same, same.
Same, et cetera. Wow.
Yep, so you're able to tell a lot of things about the accident. Sometimes you can tell who was at fault just by, by the information in that, in that box.
And now we go to D like in Delta, and this is the final payment about the roundabout? Is this all about the roundabout or the property?
The final payment for the Keesler Inside project, which is the road all the way into Keesler with the lighting on the roads, and then the roundabout outside the gate. That was the $7.9 million that we got out of the state of Mississippi to pay for that. This is the final payout to Nick Hayes Brothers.
And I like that, they talked about the roundabout with the two big piles of trash. The city has to pick that up, or that Keesler?
Yeah. While you're at it, while I stepped out of the meeting, I keep hearing people testifying, shall we say, that they've seen piles of trash places and so forth. It would be a lot easier for the city if people would call Public Works and give them the location of a pile of trash that they want to pick up, as opposed to us driving around town looking for them. It would be more efficient. For example, if that gentleman who spoke earlier, and he said there's a pile of trash at a certain location, if he would just call Public Works, and you call, the call number's right on our city website, and, you know, and then we could point a truck in that direction, as opposed to drive around town looking for trash.
Well, you know, I understand that part, but you know, when the city trucks in and pass these piles, it's not that hard for them to look at that and say they need to turn it in also. Everybody passes their cars, they've been out there for four weeks. You can't miss any one of those piles. You got to drive in between them. So I don't know, calling somebody going to make a big difference. Everybody in the brother's seen these piles of trash sitting there on that roundabout. You put all that money in the roundabout, you got the trash you're looking, so. I mean, I'll call you in, if you want me to do that, I'll call you all day long. Hit y'all addresses. So, I mean, but y'all seen these piles before? No big secret. They're out there. And it needs to be picked up by the city, and the city needs to pick it up. And then on I, this is one that everybody's been waiting for. This is the rest of the 367 farms to tear down the front part.
That's the demolition of the house.
Finally a good thing to clear up that piece of property. It'd been nothing but a nuisance. Like in India. Anyway, let's just, I hope they get that done as fast as possible. Thank you all.
Anything else? That's it? All right, Mr. Guines? Mr. Guines, you have anything? All right. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item I, that's the last thing that Mr. Lawrence referred to. We're affirming the action, and I think the action that we're affirming is tearing down the, what was behind the primary residence. Is that right?
No, that was already done.
Is that right? Because what I'm getting at is, is the prime...
It's for the old apartment complex that was behind it.
That was behind it.
The rental units behind the existing house.
So the primary residential structure is still there, and it's in poor shape. And personally, I'd love to see, and I believe from what Mr. Lawrence said, he'd love to see it...
Been in, it has been in poor shape for a long time.
Go as well. So can we follow up on that and hold that owner accountable, and he either gets secured or fixed or whatever, or else he gets demolished? That'd be terrific. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, I want to revisit item A. We tabled this for one week on June 15th to add additional or add those permitted, already permitted areas to this resolution. And I don't see them on the, on the resolution.
Councilman, what, the language that was there before said that we were going to listed six property that had already been permitted, and said those are the ones that we're submitting. What we did was pull that list of six bayous off, and I just, the language, changed the language to say that we would, we would, we would do wherever it's permitted, we don't, I don't know what'll be permitted six months from now. We're asking for $300,000. We've got $200,000 worth of dredging that's permitted already. We're asking for more money than that. So the hope, of course, is that some of the other ones will be permitted this year, and we can do more than just that list. So the language now, as you see, it reads that, that we're asking to dredge wherever it's permitted. So I'm not limiting myself to that specific six bayous.
Okay, so this council, how will we know which one is going to be on the timeline to get the work done once the funding is in place? When would we know that timeline?
Well, we'll have a contract with a dredging company, and that contract comes to you for approval, and it'll list where it's going to dredge. Right now, we have no dredging money. It's all used up. So we're waiting for tidlins money. When the tidlins money comes, we will, we'll execute a contract with Boris or some other...
Understood, understood. But in the past, we, you provided this council a list of all permitted bayous, and you had which ones were going to be in line to be dredged.
Well, that's, that was the handout I gave you last week. I can give it to you again. There were two colors, and you remember, there was a dark color and a light color.
I understand.
Dark color, the ones that are already permitted. The light color was the ones that had SAVs and were not permitted at that time.
Okay, not just last week. It was when, I mean, we had that a year ago, or more, when the... So if that's changing, you know, why would it-
It's not changing and I can, I can make the table that I have, I can turn it into a pretty chart if you, if that's more acceptable. But the same ones that showed a year ago as scheduled for permitting, either they've been permitted or not, if they've been permitted, they're on the new list that I handed out. I think it would be better if I, I thought, I thought both you, Ward and Six and Four got that list last week. It was a full page of bayous and vestuaries that were going to be looked at. Many of them showed as SAVs not yet permitted. Four or five of them showed as permitted. And they added to $225,000. So we're asking for $300,000 to do those and any others that would get permitted. And I don't know which ones, I don't know which ones are, the SAVs are going to die off and which ones are going to, we're going to press, we'd like to permit everything.
Councilman, are you, I hear what you're saying, would it be helpful before the scope of what's being dredged before that contract is let, that the council would like some input so the council could sort of come to a conclusion of what areas are going to have more priority within?
Absolutely. And not, and that's healthy for us to have input, but you have, you have homeowners who have bought homes who have, this has been public record and they've looked at it before and they're anticipating that I've bought, I've invested in this home and this, this area may be, may or may not be dredged now, where it looked like they had the green light that it would be dredged, if not at least the mouth of some of these inlets. And they're anticipating building piers or docks and additional improvements on their property. And, and now I'm telling them, hey, hold on, we, we gotta get a little bit more information before, you know, what you thought was going to happen may not be happening. And, and I just want to make sure I got good communication with folks that are depending some of this public information that we put out there. And that's where I want to be clear. Okay?
Mike, on, on that list that you sent us, I know you sent me an email saying the GIS didn't show water at the Patricia Place, the Thornhill Drive one? I sent you back some screenshots of Google Maps with the water. Did you get that?
I did, and that's Patricia Place or Patricia Point. And what Seymour told me was, and I've added it to the list as, as not yet permitted, I've added it to the list, but they, they told me that actually would be done in concert with the one that was right next to it. It's just going to clude that, clude that into North Bay, something around, I can't remember which one. I don't have that list with me.
Okay, we can discuss it later. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you got those emails. Patricia Place was added.
And listen, I just want to conclude, this is, you know, this is a complex issue. I know everybody's working hard. Everybody wants to get the dredging done in every area that they could, but I just want to make sure as I give information out and if something is changing, I, I need to get back to people that I've told them, this is some information that we put out there and it, it may not be the same. And it's real important that I do that as quickly as I can. Okay? Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Peter, going back to this thing on Saraloo, have we always done this? I mean, why is this back on approving something, the house has already been tore down, the back part? So what are you actually doing here with this on an agenda today? It's already been approved, it's been tore down. I mean, so why is this back on here for her again and not the front part?
I'm not, I don't know all the details. If it's already been torn down, it's probably to authorize the special assessment to be put on the tax rolls.
Well, we did that, so what are you, what are you doing now legally? You have to put it in a minute? I mean, this is, I don't remember doing this on these properties, every time we tore something down.
This resolution is only, only, since the job's already been completed and the contract has been paid, this is to extend the special assessment and the cost of the, cost of the cleanup to Harrison County so that they can put it on the taxes. So, so that we get, we get paid when they pay their taxes the next year.
So this has actually gone to Harrison County?
This is basically sending the bill to Harrison County so that when Saraloo has to pay her taxes, she has to pay the assessment and the administrative fee before she can pay her taxes.
Okay, but I don't see anything about Harrison County, but anyway, I don't know if we have what we're doing here because I was, I told Mr. Miller, I thought it was the second part to tear down the front part. So it's not. So, yeah, so. Anyways, so we just gotta make sure I get the other one on. That's good. Just wanted to find out what y'all doing here.
All right, any other discussion? Are there any exceptions? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll now move to code enforcement hearings.
You read them or do I read them?
Read them.
Code enforcement hearing A, Lenis L. Coleman Estate, care of Chairess H. Coleman, 1210-802-55.000, 1630 Pringle Circle, still in violation. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Lenis L. Coleman Estate, care of Chairess N. Coleman, 1630 Pringle Circle? If you will, please come forward and sign in and state your name.
We know we've let it get behind and we plan on bringing it up to code. We had electrician come out and give us the price that it would cost to repair the electrical box and all. We went out there today and mowed the grass, cleaned up the yard. I have pictures on my phone if anybody wants to see them. And we do plan on doing the repairs that it needs in the house.
I'm moving them thirty days.
All right, that was first by Mr. Guines to a movement, a motion to give thirty days, second by Ms. Newman. All in favor? Seven zero. All right, you have thirty day extension.
And where can we get a list of everything that needs to be done?
Thank you.
Yeah, you can see Mr. Nolan after the meeting and he'll, he'll give you a list of what you need. All right. All right, Mr. Nolan, you want to continue?
Case B, Joseph DeCicco, 1108D02-028.000, that's 12459 Oaklawn Road.
And it's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Joseph DeCicco, 12459 Oaklawn Road? Okay, I have a question, Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Okay. Let him speak first and then, then I'll, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Brian Cassius and I'm the one that went ahead and reported this. But they, they still have a bunch of debris against their, my fence, which is, I'm on the house to the north of them. And on my fence, I have a brand new fence that I just put up because it was taken down by storm. And they were trying to claim that my, my fence was on their property, which it wasn't. Fence has been there forever. And now the leftover fence that I have right there, that section right there, they have a bunch of debris just on the side of that, a plant right there. See how the fence is leaning? That's my shed right there. It's leaning about 12 inches out of plumb and it's destroying, they're destroying my fence. And the debris is still there and they just keep adding to it.
And which, which, is this the Oaklawn behind the grocery store?
Yes.
Okay, Wool Market Grocery, okay.
Yes. I mean, these people totally disregard anybody's property. Right now, they, they've got one of their guests right now doing auto mechanic work in Andrew's Yard that owns the store.
Okay.
So it just, they're, they don't know what the cleanup is.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Joseph DeCicco, 12459 Oaklawn Road? If not, this case is closed.
Case number C, Gatha L. and Joe A. Gaden Jr., 1410J05040.000, 159 Keller, still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Gatha L. and Joe A. Gaden, 159 Keller Avenue? All right, sir, please come forward, sign in and state your name for the record.
J A G. I've been in Valux all my life, so I used to keep everything neat. I clean the roads up. I sweep up, pick up trash next to the store. Glass, people break glass and make a mess. And all those things wrong, my trucks has got to be outsacked because I ain't got no homes. Property just for the house only. Ain't got a big sheet. I built that gazebo in the, in the back, but I got stuff down in there too. Got a million dollars of stuff. Boy, you see it's blocked off now. Everything's neat. Look at it. Only way you can see it, gotta go look over there. Not bad. I plant plants in the front. Trim it out a little bit. See, I got some sniffles, I can cut some of the, but I got, I grow tomatoes up there. It's not that bad. House don't look awful. I did all that work on the house. I'm, I'm a construction worker. I do masonry work. My roof got, Sada tore up my roof. And a lot of storm then made it leak in there again. So I gotta get that repaired. I knew how to fix all that stuff. Sada did it and this one caused it, caused the sheet, punished me again. But it's not that bad. Don't think wrong, see that tree right there? I gotta try to get that tree down. Please, I, I cut this stuff nice, but it don't look bad, do it. I'm a, I'm a fighter, man. If the, if the whole house is-
Keller. Felix.
Got to block this out. That is clean. Pretty. In the back, I done got it wrapped up. I got a little, you know, not specific stuff. On the back of the house is garbage can. Damn. I got some crab, crab pots. That's a, that's a long net of crab, crab pots. You gotta get it neat. I got a crab.
Okay, Mr. Gaden?
I did all that work. Yes, sir, I did all that work.
I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move that we give you thirty days, kind of get a-
I think I can do up with it. Garbage can, I just gotta make it look neat. I can't really shave it back there.
What, what I want you to do is to see if you can work a plan out with community development. I'm gonna give you thirty days to kind of get a plan in place because, you know, community development-
I see that in the yard, I understand.
Right, I understand.
Locked off. Stuff inside there. I'm watching, see the front and it's plants there. I gotta grow tomatoes. I can, I can grow plants, but the house, the house has got-
Right.
No grass.
If, if we ruled today, I don't have enough support to, to, to do that. So right now, we're gonna give you thirty days extension from today.
What I need to do?
Get with community development and get a plan to see, see if you can come within the rules. Okay? So just go to, okay, so you got, you got time now.
See all that stuff inside there?
Right, I see it. I see it. I see it.
On the side, I keep it clean on cop. And I pick up trash, they throw stuff, piles of glass, I'm ruled now. Next to that store, they just throw it on the ground.
Right.
I pick, I, I keep it neat for me.
Okay, and we appreciate that. We appreciate that a whole lot. But we're going to, Mr. Gaden, we're gonna take, we're gonna take thirty days and see if we can, we can get a plan together to come within the standards. Okay? So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and move, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we give them thirty days so we can come within, see if we can get a plan with them. Okay?
Fifty-two. I done retired almost, but I got a ton. I got a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Hardly. Nothing trashed out around there.
Okay.
You see? Nothing trashed up.
Right, and I'll come down and take a look, okay?
Take a look. Trucks, stuff, I used to come Saturday road fifty years ago. Now they say you gotta get your stuff off the road. But I sweeps up my, my road and I picks up the filth in that area. You gonna see it clean. Look at clean floors.
Yeah.
You understand that? I'm a clean freak.
Yeah, can I get a second?
Second motion.
Second on thirty days.
Second.
I'm a clean freak.
No, let, let Robert second. I have a question.
I pick up glass, they break glass.
Okay.
So they just throw stuff on the ground.
Mr. Bear, can you carry my motion?
Pick it up.
I, I move, I move them thirty days to get a plan together.
I second it.
All right, we have a first and a second for thirty days.
Somebody needs some roof, roof done. Masonry work. I do all that stuff, okay?
So, Mr. Gaden?
Yes, sir.
Give me, give us one second, okay, so we can handle the business. Okay, we have a first and a second, a movement, a first and a second for thirty day extension. Do we have any discussion on that?
Yes, I have, I have a question.
Y'all helping me out, but it's, by sitting down too long, I'm used to, time I sit down too long when I finna go to bed. Moving around, my booty get numb. I ain't got much butt back there. Them hard chills having my leg is funny, but it ain't funny. Cushion. Y'all got cushion back there though. Hey, now you know.
Mr. Tisdale, you want to stand up and talk or you?
Yeah, well, I wanted you to sit. Oh, that wasn't the point of discussion. I was wanting to converse on, but I do, I do have a question and I'm thinking, Eric, you may know, and Chief, you may have a comment, I'm thinking, there's nobody from the fire department here, but I'm just thinking about the life safety issues. I mean, just with the pictures that we've seen, if somebody has to get in there for safety purposes, that would present some challenges, I assume. In that part of it, it's not just neatness, it's access in case there's an emergency and folks have to get into your structure, but-
I would say as, as long as he keeps, as long as he keeps an active path around the house and he's not storing combustibles next to the house, then the fire department probably will not have a problem with that.
Okay.
Your, it's solar.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaden.
Solar cells again.
Thank you, Mr. Gaden.
I'm solar now.
Thank you, Mr. Gaden. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now you know, I got all cells in it, they're sticking up in the front, your, they're solar cells.
Thank you, Mr. Gaden. We're gonna call for the question. Yes, so no further discussion. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Gaden, you have a thirty day extension. If you'll get with Mr. Nolan, he'll get you a list of what you need to get done.
Mr. Gaden?
Mr. Gaden?
Mr. Gaden?
Thank you.
Mr. Gaden?
Okay. We'll come, we'll come by and-
Mr. Nolan?
All right, Mr. Nolan, if we go to the next item, please.
Mr. Gaden, we, we gave you thirty days, so we're gonna try to work with you, okay? Mr. Gayden, we gave you 30 days, so we're gonna try to work with you, okay? Thank you.
Howdy, howdy.
All right, you can go, you can go check on your bicycle now.
Yeah, they haven't been here too long.
Thank you.
Take the holler, woo! Now, take care of me, now, I've been here, careful. In Belux in that, that area, they had no problem no more, but now it's a little sweet, you know?
Yes, sir. All right. Have a good one.
Yeah, I'm happy.
You weren't saying anything?
All right.
Okay, Nathan. All right, Nathan, you got the floor. Mr. Barrett, you got the floor.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan, next item, please.
Case D, Maria Gestorick Estate, 1210G 02080.000, 274 Bluer Street, still in violation.
Mr. Gayden, please keep it down so that we can conduct our business. Okay, well, if you need to talk, please step outside. All right, is there anyone here on behalf, to speak on behalf or against the Maria Gestorick Estate, 274 Bluer Drive? All right, if not, this case is closed. We'll move to the next case.
Case E, Joseph M. and Roberta Kane O'Sullivan, 1110E 01058.000, 311 Westview.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Mr. Joseph M. and Roberta Kane O'Sullivan, 311 Westview Drive? All right, please come forward and state your name and sign in.
My name is Jessica Cantolora, I'm with Coast Management in Ocean Springs.
Can you please restate your name?
Sure, Jessica Cantolora.
Okay, thank you.
So, we were unaware of the code violation issue. The tenants had been, I'm the property manager. The tenants had been throwing away the notices and resending them back because they were addressed to the owner and they didn't know that was the owner. We did know there was an issue with the fence, but we were unaware that the tenants were not keeping up with the pool. The pool has been cleaned. It's still a little cloudy, it'll filter out, but it has been brought back up to where it should be. And the fence is being actively worked on. We found out about this hearing on last Wednesday, so we got everything done as quickly as we can, but with the storm, we didn't have quite enough time to finish the fence.
How much time would you need to finish the fence?
Um, probably, I mean, probably two weeks would be plenty of time, if I had to guess. I mean, we'll probably have it done if it's not already done this week, but just to not have to...
Well, we're in a giving mood today, I'll move for an extension of 30 days.
All right. Second.
We have a motion for a 30-day extension and a second by Mr. Glavin, all in favor?
Seven zero, we'll give you 30 days. And if you have any questions on what all needs to be done, you can get with Mr. Nolan and he'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item?
Case E, Joseph Colges Parker et al., 1410I 05085.000, 174 Crawford Street.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Joseph Colges Parker, 174 Crawford Street? Please come forward and state your name and sign in.
Scott Parker.
So what this is, is heir property that my father was the executor over. And of course, now he's passed away. And I'm having to deal with it. There's a lot of siblings involved that I'm trying to get quick claim deeds from presently. And due to the COVID restraints and everything, I hadn't been able to get in touch with all the out-of-state ones because there's several of them are elderly, excuse me. So, that's where I'm at with it. I wanted to repair it back when all this first started and they told me it was 60% more than 60% gone, so therefore I couldn't do that because I was trying to preserve my grandparents' house, but I wasn't able to at that point.
So, how long, how long do you need to get what you need to get this put into your...
I have three more relatives that I have to get to sign quick claim deeds so I can be in control of the property. Mr. Creel told me currently I can't do anything because I'm just one heir presently. There's a total of nine or 10 heirs now that the elderly heirs have passed on.
What are your intentions with the property? If it's 60% gone, what do you intend to do if you were to achieve receiving all of those...
I was gonna, I was originally gonna repair the whole roof and the whole shell and have it blacked back in where it's not a eyesore on the outside until I could get this paperwork finalized where I could do something to the inside because it is my family's property. Currently, for the last 15 years, I'm the only person that's gone and cut the grass over there. And recently, just cut it a week and a half ago. And I just live in Ocean Springs and I go over there every two to four weeks as much as I can and try to cut it. And I know there's some limbs that need to be trimmed right now and I just got some equipment to do that.
Mr. Nolan, what are the intentions of the city with this property?
They told me they wanted it demolished. And they told me it was 60% gone, so therefore I wasn't allowed to fix it up. So, in order for me to get a teardown permit, I have to have control of the property. Currently, nobody has control of the property in the family due to my dad's passing. He was Joseph K. Parker.
The only listing I got on here is it says dilapidated structure and if it's over 60%. And like he said, he's kind of in a catch-22 when he's dealing with an estate. You can't...
I'm missing three that I haven't been able to contact yet, that are out-of-state.
I'm gonna make a statement here. Originally, y'all was looking to have this demolished.
Right.
Y'all approved having it demolished. Everybody was in favor of doing that. Now they come over, you don't have all the heirs. I think this thing should be on the table to demolish. You can't do anything with it. You'd be better with an empty lot than that house.
The only problem I have with that for, for the demolishing part, I wanted to be able to secure a contractor myself, that way I wasn't overcharged. The rest of the family really don't care about the house. I just can't get them to sign the paperwork that I need currently.
So that don't work because that takes time at the time at the time. The house needs to be demolished, it's an eyesore, you know it better than anybody. The house is in really bad shape and it can't, it can't be repaired. You do better on an empty lot. So I just think we should put it on the table to keep it doing, demolish. You find the heirs that you got left to do that. But I mean, you know, we done this last time, give you 30 days, nothing accomplished. We've been doing it for the last several months and nothing has moved forward. So the only thing we can do is go ahead and pass this, demolish the house. You find the people's left to deal with you, between you and your family. But the house needs to be demolished and need to be put on the table to demolish that house. It's really bad shape, eyesore, not the word for it. You know, this is just like the one we did when it went on fire. So it's just not a good thing.
Eric, do you know if this house has been on, on the agenda before? Mr. Parker, have you been here with this property before?
Yes, about the grass.
How long ago was that?
About two months ago.
But that was a grass issue, not a dilapidated structure. I just remember this discussion, we talked about the same thing two months ago, we were at the same place. Talking about not being able to get people to sign it, and I think...
At the time, they still hadn't notified all of the heirs of the intent.
Initially, it did go out and we were missing several of the heirs. So we did send it back out to everybody and got all the heirs this time. I think what it was, was previous, Mr. Parker's sibling had passed away and his kids were now the heirs. So it got, it got deeper and deeper. But they've all been noticed, properly noticed now, so we're just waiting on the, on them to return the notices.
So you have it on the agenda to demolish this house, correct?
Probably not. Sounds like...
The notes I have here say, "Grass, trash, debris, and dilapidated structure." So yeah.
That every time, I mean, there's, there's no trash on the property.
The conversation we had a couple of months ago with demolishing the house, that was supposed to be back then. And then do, cutting the grass. We're talking about the house itself. And that was supposed to be on to demolish this house 60 days ago.
We couldn't demolish the house when two additional heirs showed up. We, we had to notify, at least notify.
Okay, and 60 days, so what we do, with that, nothing? So we did nothing for another 60 days. Anyone who had a people's upset in City Belux with us, for stuff like that. This house is in terrible shape and needs to be demolished, period. You know, and here we are again. Oh, we can't find the heir, we can't find, well, who's looking for? So we're gonna stay there for the next two years, waiting to find another heir? That's the problem we have with this system. I mean, the house needs to be demolished. What do you think about the neighbors, they lived every day, passing there. Every day, the same old thing. Now we're gonna go back and tell them, well, we don't know everybody yet. No, the house needs to be put on the market to demolish it, period. Let them find the heirs, not their family.
That's what it's on for today.
You know, so, but I mean, you're not doing anything, you can't do anything about that, nothing. Send out letters, you don't even know where they're going to. So they ain't doing any good. 60 days, we done nothing in 60 days.
There's several letters that I've received...
Have you found one heir sign anything in 60 days?
Wait, am I allowed to talk here? I got several letters, they still got the green stamp on them. They don't even do what they're supposed to do, that y'all wanna tear people's stuff down, so...
I mean, that's your family, if you got, you know the heirs, then you need to find out. But we need to put this in action. Not to cut the grass, we need to demolish this house. Here we go again, once and then abusing the neighbors. We got a bad house.
We got your point.
Mr. Parker, so ultimately, either we have to tear the house down or you have to tear the house down. So the house is going to get tore down, one way or the other, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You do agree with that, that the house needs to be completely demolished?
Yeah, now it does, because I wasn't allowed to fix it and it's already gone. Probably a whole nother year since the roof's been in bad shape. But they wouldn't give me a permit to fix it. So it's ultimately gonna be torn down, no matter what. Because of City Belux's rules.
I said we need to put on the table to demolish the house, whatever it takes to do that. And the house has gotta come down.
Good point, Nathan.
You know, no doubt about that.
It's gonna take...
If you can't find the heirs in 60 days, you're not gonna find another 60 days. You're not finding them evidently.
We're not recommending an extension.
Yep, yeah, we're not, I'm not extending anything. I want to make sure this house is put on the market to tear down, and what we have to do to do that, period.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's a formality, but...
I'd say in lieu of, you got the, you got all the heirs now on record. You come to the council, this is the second time this house has been before the council. I'm not opposed, it's gonna take you, it's gonna take us some time to line up contractors and all that kind of stuff. I'd give you 30 days, but we're gonna get the ball rolling to inform everybody that we're gonna demo the house. You got 30 days, get your, your house in order.
And we're not, that's not us giving an extension. That's about the amount of time it takes to put this into motion. So get these people contacted, and then if you get the things signed that you need to sign, just contact the city and, you know, we won't go forward with it and we'll allow you to. But it's not something that we can just keep kicking, kicking the can down the road, so this case is closed. Next item, please.
You can't go forward, what'd you actually do? Anybody voted on anything? You didn't vote on the extension, you go with what's on the table right now.
We didn't vote for an extension.
No, no, this, it's done.
No, there's no...
We considered it closed. That means it moves forward.
It's closed.
The case is closed.
30 days on it.
No, no, no. We just said that that's about how long it takes for us to get our contractors in place. If during that time, he's able to take care of his business and get someone to tear it down, we'll allow him to tear the house down instead of us.
Well, I'm not letting him to tear the house down. That'll never happen. That's the problem when you do a personal contract. What we have to do is get a contractor, the city, get a contractor to tear the house down and get it tore down.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, George, that's in motion.
We've moved on.
Next item.
Case G, Pensacola Shores Investment LLC, 1210I 04-012.000, 1708 Beach Boulevard, still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Pensacola Shore Investment, 1708 Beach Boulevard? If not, this case is closed. Next case.
Case number H, Samir and Malik Asan Barudi, 1309C 01005.079, 1589 Noel Court, still in violation. We gave a 30-day extension on May 18th.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Samir and Malik Baradi, 1589 Noel Court? If not, this case is closed. Next case.
Case I, Cynthia S. Joakim, 1410L 03019.000, 121 Hopkins Boulevard, 30-day extension granted on May 18th, 2021, still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf or against Cynthia Joakim, 121 Hopkins Boulevard? Please come forward and state your name and sign in.
Mayor, staff, council members, Cynthia Joakim. I'm here to simply add to what I told you at the last meeting. I have a buyer for the property. The only holdup we have now, due to the craziness of the real estate market, I'm still waiting on an appraisal. I got an email from him this morning, would be happy to share with the council members. We're that far behind in our business. We had a closing about a week ago and we had trouble with some of the attorneys who can't even get to the work. We gave it to one attorney and he informed us that he, we were 44, behind 43 closings ahead. We've tried to get home inspectors done. We've had a home that needed inspection, we called four before we got one at a time, we matter. And most of the real estate agents will tell you that they... will tell you that that's the problem that we're having. I've had the same problem with the appraiser. When I announced to y'all on May 18th that I had a buyer for the house, we were waiting on the appraiser, nothing's changed, we're still waiting on the appraiser. After three weeks, I finally did get an email from him this morning, he needs three more weeks in order to get to the appraiser, to get the appraisal done, and so respectfully, yes, the time to get that done, so that the buyer can come forward, but we do have a buyer, it is, it isn't, it is his intention, as I understand. I don't know who the buyer is, I'm dealing with his real estate agent, but it is in his intention to save the house. So if I could respectfully get just a little bit more time to get the appraisal out, or we can get the contract written, that's, that's where we are. The, the house will be sold or torn down. And he certainly has that right after he gets a deed to it.
I personally think we ought to just move on this, and if you can get anything done within that timeframe, then do it, because giving you more time, hitting confidence to anything, we ain't changed anything, said the same thing last time, couldn't get in touch with anybody, nobody come out and look at it. So, we need to put on the table that you get it done within 60 days, whatever it is, when it takes effect. So I mean, that's.
I won't be, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I know, and I'm just saying, it hadn't been anything done. I live outside the house, ain't been nothing done to it, so I don't know why anybody can't come out there and look at it. Somebody wants to buy it, then why don't they buy it?
Well, sir, we have done, we've removed part of the roof, we have a dumpster coming, we've already hired cleaning crews for the inside, we have a moving company to take the furniture out, so we've gotten that far. I know it doesn't, it shows nothing to you all, I understand that, sir. I just need the time to get the man under contract, and then after that, we, that's it. He intends to buy it, I, I was just, I don't know who the person is, I'm dealing with his real estate agent in good faith.
Whatever's on the table right now, you have a lot of time to get something done, but, but to me, we need to just move on this. Because there's nothing going anywhere, it's not happening, hadn't happened the last few years, so, just, whatever you get accomplished inside this time, timeframe, then you need to do that.
I understand, sir.
Yeah, what we heard earlier was that if, if we take action as we did in the previous case here, with no extension, there's still about a 30-day period, could be a little longer than 30 days? Would it be less than 30 days? I mean, what I'm getting at is, so if, if this property owner has the appraisal done, and within the next 30 days, and if she has a buyer within the next 30 days, before the building is demolished, do we need to have some proviso or some condition that says, if she has the appraisal done and a buyer within 30 days, that you don't move forward on the demolishing? I mean, and what I'm getting at is, so if we don't give her an extension, and she gets the appraisal done, and somebody says, this is just the house I've been looking for and wanna fix up, it'll take me three months to get things going, meanwhile, the city comes in the following week after the appraisal and tears the thing down. Is that a possibility it could unfold in that manner? So.
I just wanna make a comment, but, you know, the White House Hotel sat dormant for 30 years, 30 years, you know, and I, I believe Ms. Joakim that she's, they're, they're trying to get the appraisal, that there's probably some interest in a buyer. And, I mean, this, this building, it, it could be revitalized and, and, and have a purpose to serve, so, and I understand the frustration of the councilman that this thing's in his war, that the White House was there for 30 years. We came probably less than 30 days tearing it down completely, and there was a buyer and, and now look at it today. And I, I know we wanna do what's reasonable, we wanna, you know, clean up these dilapidated buildings, we don't want them to sit dormant for 30 years, but, you know, if you can demonstrate that you got appraisals and buyers and, and that you're in good, good faith moving in that direction, I'm not opposed to giving you some time. You know, if there isn't good faith and, and things are different, then, then I'd feel differently. I think that's reasonable.
Councilman Glavin, it's been four years, nothing been done to that house in four years. We're not talking about a big piece of property, a hotel, we're talking about a neighborhood house. And the house, it alone, they want it gone so they could sell the property to de, develop the hotel and the property. There's nothing, they're not gonna repair the house, they're not gonna fix it up. And opportunity after opportunity, in the last four years to do that, they've done nothing. So, yeah, that sounds nice, but that, it's not gonna work. The house will be demolished, that's the purpose of the whole syst, system right here, so they can sell the land to try to build a hotel in front of it. I mean, that's, that's it. Let's put this up on the table that's on the table. That's what, that's what it's all about.
Eric, is the building, is the building secure?
No, it's not.
You can, you can enter the building from?
It's supposed to be done last time.
Excuse me, sir, can I answer that? The doors are locked downstairs, and they've been secured. The windows that are downstairs are locked, the, there, there's nothing open downstairs. Obviously, the windows are open downstairs in the apartment where the fire occurred. I've had three contractors whose names I could tell you, that have looked at the house and said the house can be saved.
And we heard 60% in the previous, a case or two ago, in a house being demolished, so 60%, is there a percentage here? Eric, you might have handy?
The city inspector has been in the house and has taken pictures. The, the burned part is an apartment, the other apartments are fine, except for smoke and soot and water that obviously is coming.
This was a, this was not a Katrina 60%?
Mayor, I have a question, Ms. Joakim. Do you have a contract in place?
No, that's what we, what, that's what we're waiting on. In fact, before I came to the meeting this morning, I notified the broker, the realtor that I'm working with, and he knows that I'm here today. And the only reason why we haven't gotten the contract in place is because we're waiting on evaluation, which I told his agent I would get an appraisal for the property, and we would go from there.
The upstairs have never been secured in the last couple of years. I mean, how many extensions you gonna get, and we still not gonna get it secured. It's wide open, rain pours in every day, so it's rotting the whole house. It's not to restore the house, this house is there to be demolished, so he can sell the property. I mean, just face the fact, that's the name of the game. Otherwise, the house had been fixed up, grabbed and burned.
Is, is this an historic structure or city landmark or anything?
It's in the, it's in the West Central Historical District, it's not on the historical register for the state or anything else.
So, I'm thinking if, from what you said, Ms. Joakim, you have an appraisal lined up in three weeks, and did I hear that there is a prospective buyer identified?
I, I don't know his or her name, I only am dealing with his agent, I've been dealing with his agent about four weeks, because after, I, I had dealt with him before I came to see you all on May 18th, and we were working on the price, and we, and I told him I would get an appraisal, they are agreeable to that. He hasn't revealed his buyer yet, but he checks in with me every week, and as late as Friday, I tell him, I'm waiting on the appraiser. And finally, did get an email from the appraiser this morning with the apologies and what his problems are, he said he can do it in three weeks.
How old is this home, do we know?
1925.
It's almost 100 years.
Yes.
I would make a motion for a 60-day extension to permit you to get the appraisal done, and that give you several weeks.
You can move it for a year, Paul, nothing gonna happen.
I understand that.
Now, you're doing something against what the neighborhood wants.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but.
The exact same thing, the exact same statement, 30 days.
A 100-year-old building.
Now, listen, 30 days ago, and what was done, nothing, not one thing was done. You give it two years, it ain't gonna matter. It's not gonna do anything. The house gonna be demolished, so he can sell the property. They're not fixing the house up, Paul, period. Given all this time, buyer, I heard the buyer, I've been hitting the buyer for the last year, the last, okay, you can't find a buyer, you can't give the name.
And it's also a different.
Can't find a construction company.
Also a different real estate market right now, George. So I don't know that 60 days at this point would make a difference?
Okay, we have a, we have a, a motion for 60 days, do I have a second? I'll, I'll second it. So I'll call for the question, all in favor? All right, four to two.
Yeah, thank y'all. I'll tell the neighbors y'all supported him again.
George against, Robert Demming out of the room.
You're not gonna do anything.
Well, and, and I, I believe she'll do.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I don't wanna hear anymore about it.
I know you don't wanna hear it, but I, but I listened to you when I was speaking, so.
I'll move the routine agenda.
That being, that being the case, I'm sure she'll make an effort, get the appraisal done, and get the property sold, and if it's not done in 60 days, it'll disappear.
All right, we're now.
Thank you.
That, that ends the settlement hearings, we will now move to the routine agenda, do I have a motion? Mr. Guns, do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, discussion?
We're gonna, just act like we got more money.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six zero, Mr. Demming out of the room, do I have a motion to adjourn? So move. Have a first by Mr. Guns, second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Six zero, thank you.
And I'm not trying to be contentious, I'm trying to.